All right, we will now conduct our public hearing. It's at six o'clock on December 10th, 2024. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Item number 23 is your first and only public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from the manufactured and single-family detached or R5 and light industrial zoning districts to the medium-density or MR1 zoning district for 9.04 acres located at 112 and 116 Horstman Association Road. The item requests that the Board conduct a public hearing. The proposed ordinance would allow for residential redevelopment, redevelopment of the subject parcels. The planning commission found this proposed ordinance to be consistent with the comp plan, and staff is recommending approval as option one. We have no speakers on this item.
All right, Commissioners, would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move option one.
We've got a motion for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Motion is made by Commissioner Cummings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Show it passes six to zero. Commissioner Maddox out of chambers. Excuse me. Mr. County Administrator, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item, item number 24, requests the Board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider adopting the proposed resolution to utilize the uniform method of levy collection and enforcement of the non-ad valorem assessments for the purposes of collecting the full amount of charges related to sewer service imposed on two parcels located on Woodville Highway and Lewis Boulevard within the Bel Air Anna Wood Wastewater Retrofit Project area. The two parcels were inadvertently excluded from the initial non-ad valorem assessment approved by the Board in 2023, consistent with the December 11, 2018 approved interlocal agreement. The assessment will cover a portion of the city's cost for operating, maintaining, operating and maintaining the sewer system and other costs incurred to ensure the sewer system has, is ready to serve when customers choose to connect. We're recommending option one. We have no speakers on this item. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, move option one.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Minor for staff recommendation option one. Is there a second?
I second, Mr. Chair.
Second from Commissioner Cummings. We are in discussion. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand I might be the minority on this, this public hearing agenda item and the next one, but I intend to vote no. I will be voting no. The reason for that, I do not believe that we should be the ones collecting, collecting the fines. If, I believe the City of Tallahassee should be the ones collecting the fines. I also, you know, these are deals that were cut prior to me being on the Board, but I do not like the fact that the city can charge 50% surcharge, 50%, up to 50% surcharge on sewer fees. I saw just what happened earlier this year. I believe it was Kalaran Lakes, where they, they had a massive increase in, in one year, and there's no, there's no limits to how much it can increase year over. There's no limits to, you know, us holding it back, saying it can't increase more than 5% per year, 10% per year. And so I'm going to be voting no on this. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, any further discussion? Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to stand with Commissioner Caban on this. I continue to echo disappointment in the whole gerrymandered matter of delivering central sewer services in that area and continue to be frustrated with the slow pace of the city providing central sewer in areas that are very compacted with people. And as Agenda Item Number Nine was about our applying for state money to help assist septic to sewer grants applicants with grants support. We're doing that. We're pulling our weight, but the city is dragging their feet with respect to serving all the people inside of Capital Circle. And there's no reason why the inside of Capital Circle should be, and race is a factor, okay? Economics is a factor. And the city, an all-American city, is way south in Dixie when it comes to providing sewer uniform across this region. It's really bad that the people who live closest to the sewer treatment plant can't get the services and they're disappointed. I could go on, but I'll pull up there and I'll be standing with Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Any other commentary? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
All right, passes five to two.
No, I'm just about to, Mr. Chair, that previous item, can you show me?
Yes, sir. So, on item 24, we're five to Commissioner Caban, Commissioner Proctor, no votes. And then please have the record show that Commissioner Maddox was in the affirmative on item 23. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. County Administrator, we're on item 25.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item requests the Board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider adopting a resolution to utilize the uniform method of levy collection and enforcement on non-ad valorem assessments for the purposes of collecting the full amount of all charges related to sewer services imposed on certain real property located in the northeast Lake Munson Sewer System Project area. Again, Commissioners, this, the construction of this project will be completed early next year and will be turned over to the city for operation, as we've done with all these neighborhood conversions. This enables us, consistent with a lot of Board priorities, to convert an additional 220 existing septic tanks in this area. Again, this is consistent with the previously referenced interlocal agreements, and we expect that this uniform method of collection will be utilized for 70 parcels in the project area that currently do not have metered accounts. Obviously, that number will be smaller if, if additional people are ultimately served by sewer. Again, Florida statutes requires us to adopt this resolution at a public hearing prior to January 1st in order to impose a non-ad valorem special assessment. And with that, we're recommending option one, and we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. We have any motions?
Move staff recommendation.
I second, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Maddox, second from Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, are we imposing a levy prior to people actually receiving the services?
Commissioner Proctor, I think that's a readiness-to-serv charge, I'm not sure. Anna? I'm sorry.
No, sir. The, the people will not be assessed until after they have started receiving service, so they pay for service that they have already received.
Okay. Have the people been informed of this methodology of, of securing their funds?
Well, they're notified through the public notice for the public hearing, and then those who choose to participate are notified in that.
But the 70 people that we're having this for, were they notified? I mean, you all talked to them or you sent them a sheet of paper or something?
They will be notified, yeah, in advance of, of being charged. They'll be notified prior to the public hearings that will be held in July next year.
I feel like the people should have been told something prior to our imposing a tax. And I have unreadiness, procedural unreadiness, because, again, Lake Munson, consider the history of the area. Consider Lake Munson itself being a dumping ground of sewer raw from the city. If there's anybody who ought to have a waiver and not have to pay a dime, it should be Lake Munson. Excuse me. It's cold in this building. Got your nose running. Lake Munson have endured, have been, the citizens around the area have been frontline shock absorbers. Last summer, I think it was last summer, summer before last, the county posted a do-not-let-your-dog-get-in-the-water sign. Commissioner Matlow and I went down there, and it was stunning that there was the public advisory from our government telling people not to fish, don't, don't let the water touch you, don't let your animals. And we had citizens come here who had, had acquired some kind of allergic reaction to maybe the air or whatever was going on, but there's been a lot of issues. And I frankly think that if there's any area that ought to have been, receive a waiver for just over the years and years of impact of dealing around with, through Lake Munson, I would be curious to know the, if the Health Department has done a study to review the people that die from cancer around a mile radius, or half a mile radius, or a fourth of a mile radius around Lake Munson. I, I don't know a lot about how you set something like that up, but study ought to be done. And if you see the casualty rates and look at the Leon County Health Department's issuance of death certificates relative to the number of people done died the last 30, 15, five years, I bet you Commissioner Minor's next paycheck, I bet all of it in fact, that, you don't mind me betting all of it the night before Christmas, but all throughout. Okay. I would bet his paycheck that in terms of death occurrences due to cancer, that Lake Munson is likely among the top one, two, three areas where cancer is a leading cause for death. I strongly feel that way. We've not done a health review. We are aware, the city is aware of how many billions of gallons of sewer have been exposed. People come here, we, Commissioner Cummings and I, I can't remember if it was this past spring or last year, went down to that church, Crossway Church. Was it Crossway Church? It was way crossed away. It was crossed away church. Went down there and they gave a great presentation. They have tried to offer science to us that we've deemed our own staff's comments to be superior, almost a block, and put our hand up. Commissioner Caban has led the charge to say we don't want to hear from them for a year until we've gathered more science from the county, whomever that third party is. We don't want to hear from them, not even science, let alone rhetoric. So, I'm at that point of displeasure and feel that something inequitable has been occurring in that area for a long time. And I'm not an undertaker of stuff like that, but I believe that if the undertaker examined what them people died from, we all would be alarmed. So, I'll be opposing this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Caban?
I have a question for the County Administrator or the, the County Attorney. For our utility providers down in unincorporated Leon County, Talquin Electric, we have City of Tallahassee, we have Duke Energy, is that correct?
Yes, primarily, usually in this part of town, primarily the City of Tallahassee and Talquin Electric.
And when they, when a, when a customer or a constituent in unincorporated Leon County signs up for utilities, they are billed and paid directly through the utility provider?
Yes.
Why, why for this, like, what I'm having a hard time just grasping and understanding is why on this are we, are we responsible for the billing and collecting the revenue from taxpayers and then, you know, basically being a pass-through entity for the city? Why is that different than electric utilities?
Mr. Chairman, yes, Commissioners, yeah, so for, for those customers who connect to the utility, all of their charges are charged by the city utility in this case, only if for those people who choose not to connect. And I should note, we waive every fee and charge imaginable under these programs. The only thing we can't waive are the ongoing usage charges. So, everything else, we pay for through this grant. The disposal of the septic tank, the connection fees, $10,000 to $12,000 per on this. So, every, all of that is covered, but if you choose, again, not to connect to the system, then there's a readiness-to-serv charge that the city cannot collect because they, they don't have the mechanism to do so because they don't have an account associated with that, that, that customer. So, what they do in this case, and what, what is common, what is customary to do in cases like this, is that the entity who desires for those septic tanks to go in, in this case, the, the county, we agree, if they agree to take over the system, that we agree to charge the readiness-to-serv fee on those, on, on those residences that are not connected. What the readiness-to-serv fee allows the city to do is to continue to maintain operational capacity of those folks to connect when indeed they, they do decide, if and when indeed they do decide to connect. And, and again, if I missed anything, Madam County Attorney, you can feel free to jump in as well.
So, no, I appreciate, so what is the mechanism that, what is the mechanism that prevents the City of Tallahassee from charging them directly instead of the county? Is it?
We've contractually agreed and bound ourselves to do that, so our contract, we would be breaching our contract not to do that. And practically, they have no enforcement mechanism if someone doesn't pay because they don't provide services. That's the practical reason.
So, could we amend the contract?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
We cannot unilaterally amend the contract. The city would have to agree.
And that we haven't made any efforts to try to amend or, or say, hey, we don't like this, this, this method of us being a pass-through. And here's my, Commissioners, here's my, my reasoning for this, right? Is when you get a bill, when taxpayers get a bill and they see a fee being charged on it or it goes up, they assume that with the county, not the City of Tallahassee, especially if they don't live in city limits. And especially, you know, so for me, my frustration is we have a contract that we signed with them, and we have no mechanism to change it whatsoever. We, we could have ever reached out, try to change it?
I, I think, Madam, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I'm going to be doing that.
Yeah, I know, I do this.
Mr. Chairman, the, yeah, essentially what it is, is what the County Attorney said. It's, it's, I think the city has expressed, and again, it's, it's common for this reason is that they, they would not have an enforcement mechanism to collect those charges, in which case the enforcement mechanism is that it is collected on the, the tax bill. Otherwise, people could simply choose not to pay it.
And then the city couldn't get, the city couldn't get the money right, but they chose not to pay it. That's what I'm getting at, and the city can't collect.
Correct. And at the same time, the whole point of the readiness-to-serv charge and the reason these people are required to pay that particular charge is the city utility is holding that capacity and maintaining that line so that when that property owner decides that they want or are required to, if their septic tank, for example, goes bad and the Health Department will not issue them a new septic permit, even if they don't want to connect, they're going to have to. And that's what that readiness-to-serv charge is, is for the next month or year or 10 years, while they're holding that capacity and maintaining that system, making that service available, they're incurring that cost. So, they defray that cost even though that customer is deciding not to connect at that time, but the service is available to them at any time.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry.
All right. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Maddox, second by Commissioner Cummings on item number 25. Any further discussion?
Point of inquiry. Is it not a policy that you, you get before you're forced to sign on that you get one more, two more cleanouts? Is that accurate? Are close to accurate, in the ballpark, near the fence, first base, what?
Thank you. You, when your system is failing, you would need to get a cleanout. The more cleanouts you get, I don't think the Health Department lets you have a certain number of cleanouts. At some point, you'd be cleaning it out all the time, and so you would be essentially forced to get a permit at that time because you wouldn't continue to clean it out on a monthly or weekly basis. But if you go apply for a permit, they don't say you can clean it out two more times before you have to change it.
Okay, but I hear the last part, relative to Commissioner Caban's question, when the trigger that you gotta sign on, that occurs after a final or last two cleanouts. Is that accurate? I mean, there's a notice that you got to sign up, you must sign up, but then, once you're noticed, that notice allows you to get an additional cleaning. Is that?
It's, it's really based on the property owner's decision. Some people say, I've had to clean it out two times in six months, it's time to get a new system. Some people say, I'm going to clean it out once a month and then get a new system. So, it's really kind of up to them on when they go get that permit. I mean, the Department of Health could come and put them in violation, at which time they would be required to, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, Commissioner Proctor, are you in affirmative or negative?
Negative.
Okay, so passes five to two. Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Caban. What's the terminology for that? In the, in dissent? Thank you, thank you. All right, so that concludes our public hearing. We are, we're going to go to citizen, you want to do citizens to be heard on non-agenda items? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one citizen to be heard, Delitri Hollinger.
Good evening, Commissioners. Delitri Hollinger, 750 Whale Street. I'm the co-executive director of the Florida Civil Rights Museum. Also here's Jacqueline Perkins, co-executive director. On Thursday, January the 16th, the Florida Civil Rights Museum will host our Black Tie Affair and Wall of Distinction Ceremony. That'll be held at 7:00 PM at Tallahassee State College. The county is a table sponsor for that event. We look forward to seeing those of you who are able to attend and participate. On January the 24th, which is on a Friday, the Civil Rights Museum will participate in a ceremony at 9:00 AM where we will mark the grave of Ms. E. Lillian Spencer, who was a Tallahasian, born in here in 1905, lived her entire life on Eugenia Street here in Tallahassee, and won a national tennis championship in 1937 on the segregated tennis circuit. She would become the principal of Bond Junior High School, as it was called at that time, from 1941 to 1951. And I discovered that she was an unmarked grave, so community, the, the community and myself, Ms. Perkins, all chipped in to purchase a monument for her grave in Oakland Cemetery, so that'll take place January 24th, 9:00 AM. The same day, we will have our first installment on the Florida Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail, corner of Eugenia Street and Famy Way, where we will dedicate a historical marker to Ms. E. Lillian Spencer at the site of her former home. So, we look forward to seeing all of you there. And then, following that, we will dedicate portraits of the former principals of Bond School. So, we look forward, 16th, 24th, more information is forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollinger. Mr. County Administrator, any further business? Okay, Commissioner Proctor, we are back to your commission discussion time.
Let Mr. Will Cox come forward. Thank you very much. Mr. Will Cox, a few weeks ago, you indicated to this Board that on the naming of Wantish Way, that this Board and policies did not allow for roads to be broken up, and that the name Althea Gibson, of which Florida University is requesting, was the name Althea Gibson Way from Orange Avenue down to Famy Way north, which it would have bypassed college terrace, which includes Howard Avenue, Famy, Hampton, as well as Gore Avenue, Famy DRS, the plant, Took Center, Gaither Gym, Lawson Gym, all the way down the street, past Bragg. I specifically ask that we leave Wantish Way along its name. You remember what you told our Board, that that was not doable, not possible?
That's, yes, in our policy and procedures manual for addressing, we are not capable of addressing, readdressing, or renaming a portion of a street, but rather, we look to the entire street, so we're not leaving a segment of that street unrenamed, so that there's a continuation of that naming across the entire length of the street.
I feel like you have totally lied to us. Last week, you've seen it presented to us all evening, it circulated, the renaming of Pasco Street to Anita Davis is a place, apology? And I attended it, other Commissioners attended it, and south of Orange Avenue, which runs parallel to Wantish, there is Adam Street running north and south, there's Wantish Way north and south, and there's Pasco running north and south from Bragg going forward. What makes the policy that you said could not, that you had to name the whole street one thing, but now you have Anita Davis name, which I'm not against at all? I was not against keeping Wantish Way as Wantish Way, but you said that the policy mandated us, had to have one name. Now, I hope this picture shows up so you can see exactly what I'm talking about, and I need you to explain that to me, sir, what happened and why, on the same sideways, parallel street, the name changes and Pasco is north of, and then it turns into T-Pain, and then south of Orange, it turns into Anita Davis. We've got Wantish Way that turns into Railroad Avenue, that turns into McComb, that turns into Old Bemidge Road. Why didn't you name the tennis star, Althea Gibson's name if you got to run it? Run the whole damn name all the way up to Old Bemidge Road and rename it. Somebody has lied to this.
Mr. Proctor, can we let him answer the question, please?
Yeah, I assume you're referring to a street, a city street renaming? Am I correct there? Okay, that's why I wasn't familiar with that one. So, that's not actually a street renaming that came through our office. As you'll probably recall, after.
These streets are side by side.
Understood, Commissioner, yes. After the Wantish Way street renaming proposal, the city took over renaming, they adopted an ordinance. Prior to that, they did not have their own ordinance for renaming of streets. After Wantish Way came through here, they. After Wantish Way came through here, they adopted their own street renaming ordinance, which gave them the power to rename streets within the city of Tallahassee. So the Pasco Street renaming you're referring to, and again, I'm not familiar with that one, because again, it did not come through our shop. The city did that unilaterally on their own. I can't speak to the rules and policies that they may have followed on that one in particular. I can only speak to the rules and policies that we follow if we're renaming any streets as the county.
Commissioners, I'm, the city has sent out representations and said it was so very important that from Bragg Drive all the way down to Family Way, you had to have one. And they seized and take and took powers from us, from our board, which had had naming authority, seized that, preempted what we would do. Family didn't ask for all of that name to go all the way down to Bragg, and the city showed, no, no, we're going to be there. Then here we come, a few weeks later, the same folk that stopped and prohibited us go to the next street over, run parallel with Wantish, and name somebody's name, a county commissioner, no doubt, but a former mayor's name of the city, they would not keep. Stupid. But then a county commissioner's name, they would rename. So you got to a county commissioner's name, Pasco Street and T-Pain. I'm beyond confused, I'm muffled about this. And I'd like, if possible, to understand what is the current status of the city's policies, because it's just all out in the open hypocrisy. And I'm asking staff for, what is the standstill rule?
Mr. Chair, may I ask an open question? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have our, the policy that post that we don't name portions of a road, that is a county policy, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the city created their own policy, and that policy allows for such to happen? Or we don't know, but we're assuming based off what's happened, that their policy allows for such to happen?
Correct.
Okay. So our policies don't, they're not congruent with each other, they don't match? We don't know. We can't say for sure, but some kind of way, they can name portions of roads. Hypothetically, if I wanted to name Calhoun Street, or better yet, South Monroe, from Orange to Trenton, William C. Proctor...
That is right, that right, that's it. That, Bragg Drive, Anita Davis Place, renamed.
Right. If I wanted to name it in Commissioner Proctor's honor, right?
Right.
We couldn't do it unless it was the whole road. Now, let's say, let's say that we did do the whole road, and we passed it. Now, my confusion comes in, is if we pass it, then it can be renamed, but what if the city, you know, it's a lot of, it's a lot of moving balls there, and I'm just, I'm not really concerned as much about the balance of power there, that they can name roads, that we can name, and all that kind of stuff, as much as I am to make sure that we're all on the same page. And so maybe, maybe the answer here is not for us to think about, to have this real long conversation about, you know, what was named and how it was named. Maybe now that the city has a policy, the question I have is, can our policies get on the same page? So whereas, when we make decisions, we can, we can be in the same lanes and thinking the same things. Or, Mr. Administrator, if you're my ma'am's chair, is it better we just stay in the lane that we're in and do it? Because this is going to get messy, because now the city's starting to name different roads in different ways, and what they've done, three, since the Gibson Road, the Gibson, T-Pain, and now Anita Davis. And I can see more coming. And what I'm not willing to do is have us continue to come up here and have conversation about stuff that's going on there, because we're not congruent. So the question I have is, do we want, do we want to have a conversation around how we create a policy that matches, where there's consideration by both? Are we just going to let this go? Because I'm not, I get what you're saying, Commissioner Proctor, but, but, but the question is not, well, you said we couldn't, the city, the city created their own policy, so whereby they could do what they want to do.
And by them doing that, we were ordered to stand down. We were ordered that the name Wantish is not going to remain. We're going to force this name. Family didn't ask for it before, south of Orange, but the city dictated to us, took our authority, our voice away, and rammed that name down our throat.
Mr. Proctor, we got some folks that want to speak on this. I think it would be...
I get that, Ms. Welch, this is in my district, it's on my goddamn street I live on. And I've lived on Pasco, and I've lived on Wantish. This is personal. Now, I need to say, we were told that emergency vehicles, we had to change the name for the purposes of emergency vehicles, we've got to be able to get, and for the purposes of emergency vehicles. Hell, what about these three different names on that street for emergency vehicles? They exempt from that street? So I don't want nobody to give me no BS. I don't want BS. And emergency vehicles either got to go down the street and find the same street, and it applies to Wantish, and it applies to Althea Gibson, as well as one street over. What is, where's the emergency vehicle part that you guys came up and bullshit at us with? I am totally pissed off.
Commissioner Proctor, I'd like to hear from the county administrator, and I'd appreciate it respectfully, if you could...
We've not been respected.
Moderate your language, sir.
You give respect when we have received respect.
I understand you're frustrating, Commissioner Proctor, but...
But we have not been respected in this instance, sir.
Commissioner Proctor, we got to maintain order, please. And I'd appreciate it if your language was more respectful. I know that that's important to you, it's important to all of us, there are people watching this. Could we please not use that kind of language at the dais? I'd appreciate it. I think it's important, maybe, to hear from the county administrator, to get his perspective on the issue. Certainly, our staff, I think I understand the issue fairly well, but I understand it's personal to you and...
We can only rely on what we hear from staff, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, or Mr. County Administrator.
Sure. Very, just very quickly, I think, I think the board's well aware of this, the, all the information that you received from your staff when this was in our jurisdiction is consistent with board policy. And that's exactly what, what Barry presented to us at the time, and as has been noted, these policies are based on public safety, and the people who sit on that committee represent all the public safety agencies. And again, that's the policy that the board has. With respect to the city's policy, here's the important part, it's the city's policy.
Right. Say. Commissioner, Mr. County Administrator, I mean, it would be, seem to me, my understanding is, the city can do whatever they want on their roads. Correct. So, I mean, we can, we can make, we can adopt a policy that mirrors the city's policy, but that don't mean nothing. We wouldn't have the ability to impact what they do on their roads. They have taken that authority amongst themselves now, after the Wantish Way thing. So I know you're frustrated, Commissioner Proctor, short of going over there and asking nicely that they give us back the authority to impact how they name streets, or how, you know, give us the input we want, I don't see if there's much we can do. Commissioner Caban, you recognize?
Thank you. I think it's an important point to make. This is, no shade, not trying to get in any, you know, city or county, you know, argument, but I'm elected to represent the county. The city can do whatever they want on city roads, because we, as a county, allow them to do whatever they want on city roads. The city of Tallahassee is a municipality in Leon County, and we are the county. Our charter does not allow us to preempt the city, which is why we allow them to dictate within city limits. So I just want to be clear of what, where we are right now, and why the city policy doesn't allow us to do anything in city limits. The city, because of our charter, changed the policy so that we have no influence over renaming of city roads, amongst other things. Right? That's the principle. Madam Chair, Madam Attorney, am I wrong?
You are correct.
Thanks.
With the exception of environmental standards, which we set a base for, but other than that, yes, the city within the municipal limits, according to our charter, can adopt an ordinance that preempts ours. Yes.
Other counties in Florida have the ability to preempt municipalities. Now, I'm not saying that's what we should do, but that's the fundamental issue of what is on the table right now, that our charter is laid out, that we defer to the city in city limits. Not every county does that, but that is the, that is the principle of the foundation of this conversation. So just wanted to point that out.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban.
Commissioner...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cummings, I'm sorry, I saw you right there.
That's okay. Thank you, Commissioner Welsh. And I appreciate the comments about the street namings, and certainly understand Commissioner Proctor's concern and sentimentalism and sentiment. However, at this juncture, would it be helpful if we at least had a copy of the city's policy? Maybe, Madam County Attorney, I'll ask her. I think that would be helpful. I mean, we're talking now abstractly. There might be some flexibility, you know, in the city's policy, but right now, I think pretty much what's done is done. We dedicated Anita Davis Place, we were there, Commissioner Proctor was there, we dedicated T-Pain Lane, I was there, read a proclamation, you know, from the county. And it's my understanding that after the county voted for staff to bring back a recommendation about Wantish Way, in the midst of us getting a recommendation, the city took it from us and went on and decided to rename that whole end of the corridor, all the way to Bragg, Bragg Drive. So I think if they've got an established policy on street naming, I think it would benefit us to see what their policy is compared to ours, if we got a policy that says, for health, safety, health and safety reasons, we don't want to bifurcate the names on the same corridor, because emergency vehicles might get confused or what have you. I think it's worth looking at. At some point, we might want to mirror what they have, they might want to mirror what we have, or we might not want to do anything. But I think we'd be well informed if we, if we had a copy of their policy. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Maddox, I'd love to hear your ideas here.
So, as I'm listening to the conversations, it, I mean, I get it, you know, some things happen that we wish we were a part of. But how often do we complain about preemption that happens in the state of Florida? Technically, Leon County is a county in the state of Florida, and anytime the state of Florida feels like we're not doing something to the level that they like for us to do it, they can go up and they can create laws that preempt us and take control from us. We all, Commissioner Minus is very familiar with this, believe in home rule. But just me personally, I think it's hypocritical for us not to consider the same when we talk about the city. The city of Tallahassee is in Leon County. If we want to big boy and say, okay, we want to take those responsibilities from you and do it on our own, we can do that, but there's county roads, there's city roads, and there's state roads. State roads, the city and the county can't do anything with, correct? If we wanted to rename a state road, we couldn't do that, could we? City roads, the city has chosen to want to create policy whereby they can name their own roads. And I would imagine that if it's a city road now, that if we came up here, and this is kind of what I was trying to figure out earlier, and we wanted to rename a city road, we could, but then the city could say, given the fact that they got their own policy, that they didn't want that. But I bet you the city wouldn't be interested in renaming the county road. So as I'm looking at it, I know it's frustrating, but we're not city commissioners, we're county commissioners. I have, I have no, I have no inclinations to want to go over there and tell them people how to do their business. And I don't want them to come over here and try and tell us how to do ours. So if they want to create a policy that governs how they name the roads within the city limits that are city roads, so be it. They have that prerogative. And personally, I believe we should respect it. We should not create something that then says, well, you're the city within the county, so we're going to tell you that you can't rename any roads. No, there's electorate that votes for city commissioners, and those city commissioners are in charge, or they put those folks there to make policy for the city that benefits the city. The county voted on us to put policies that benefit the county. When it comes to these roads, y'all, I'm not willing, I don't even want to have the conversation. I don't want to have the conversation on preemption when it comes to the city on anything besides the things that we've talked about. Now, could there be some stuff that made sense? Yeah, it could be some stuff that makes sense, but we're talking about renaming roads. So I'm not trying to preempt the city from being able to rename the roads within the city that they want to rename, because when they rename them, they're going to have to answer to the electorate as to what the renaming that they did. So I get where, I get where we are, I understand what we're saying here, but if we, if we all say we believe in home rule, and we don't want the state handing down legislation that preempts us from doing the things that we want to do, then how can we be hypocritical and do the same thing to the city on something as simple as naming a road because we don't agree with the way they did it? Now, we can change, now, the only thing I'm willing to consider, if we want to change our policies to mirror the city whereby we can bifurcate and name portions of roads, and we think that's a good idea, well, then let's do it, but preemption on the city on name, road naming, I don't think that's the place I'm trying to go. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Proctor, we're in commissioner time, discussion time, so do you have anything else?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Apologize for language that you don't approve of, Mr. Chairman. Florida M University asked for a road name change for the road that ran adjacent to its campus, no, nothing more. The city policy was shifted to say that the entire stretch of road had to have one name. That's what we were told. So subsequent to that, right next to the road, which we were told it had to have the same name, and that's why they had to force Althea Gibson's name upon Wantish Way to Bragg. Yet, one street over to prove to us that they could do whatever they want on Pasco, which runs parallel to Wantish, the city turns it to the north side of Pasco to T-Pain, and the south end of it to Anita Davis. And it's completely contrary to what we, as a commission, were told, and that we had no voice or say into it. And, you know, I guess the emergency services go to Pasco Street, to T-Pain Street, to Anita Davis Street, I guess, because they certainly go to Althea Gibson Way, to Railroad, to McComb, to Old Bainbridge Road. And, you know, with GPS now, how could you get lost? I was asking for an understanding of what is the differential of Anita Davis, Pasco, T-Pain, and what we were told, kiddies, forget y'all, we run this show. That's how we were treated, we were disrespected. Want to give a shout out to Judge Augustus Akins. Commissioner Cummings, you were just all front and center. You were showing out there. And I saw these photos, and I had, I was traveling, and I told Judge Akins that I would not be at the ceremony, and I've admired him, his family, for a long time, and for hopefully many years to come, the front of our new building, Augustus Akins Justice Center here at Leon County. It's quite memorable, and so well-earned, as supported and brought to this commission by the chief judge at that time. Also want to give a shout out to Coach Willie Simmons, former Family Head Football Coach, who now is taking the role of Head Football Coach at the Florida International University. I had to look up the colors. Delitri, I know you already know. You got an eligibility? Coach Simmons looking for a good linebacker. You, well, I think Rickards... Huh? Blue and gold. That was your school? My little Tyrrell had blue and gold. I looked up the colors, and I got to get some blue and gold, and that's exactly where, and I thought that Coach Simmons made a powerful, very powerful statement, in that he says that our athletics is going to catch up with our academics, and that was a powerful, beautiful statement. I want the Simmons family to know, there is so much love in District One, so much regard and respect for Coach Simmons, and we sure missed him on Mississippi Valley, and we missed him for Prairie View, and we... missed him for Prairie View, and we missed him on that Jackson State game, and, but we're going to be with him. Now, where is F I U located, Miss Otero?
Miami.
Miami, okay, 305, all right. Commissioners, cemetery, I'm continuing to be asked about cemetery space in the south side, and Vince, I don't know if we were asked before, but if staff could identify, and I'm not sure how, how many acres you got to have to, but you know, we got the National Forest down there, a whole lot of miles, but we do need a cemetery as well on our Christmas list, if we could get a report on that. Commissioners, Commissioner Coman touched a little bit on a sidewalks in Woodville area for our, for our retreat. I wanted to ask your support by way of a motion that at our retreat, we would talk about the growth of the South County. I think we got something coming up soon, but Woodville specifically, and how do we facilitate the expansion of commercial and residential growth in this last frontier? And $63 million, staff reported on one of the items tonight, for septic work services, 63 million. We're putting the pipes in the ground so that Woodville is one day going to stand up and be somebody, and that kind of investment in the ground deserves our discussion of what is going to happen on top of the ground. And I'd make the motion if we could place it on our agenda for the retreat, a contemplation of Woodville's future residentially and commercial, so move.
All right, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Coman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. Proctor?
Thank you. I want to apologize to, um, to County Administrator Long. Back on Agenda Item Number Nine, I went back and reread the thing, and Vince, you were absolutely right, that in a more careful reading of what we were doing, we've actually completed 78 homes. And you see that sentence under the statement of issues, the last one, and I read it wrong. And what the extension of the agreement would provide, the additional time necessary to upgrade, the final two, as you said, septic systems, resulting in the conversion of more than 80 septic systems through this project, and that right there is great. But what I don't think we need, Vince, we don't need until, uh, March 31st, 2026. And the reason I say that is that this extension, I wouldn't want for this extension in any way to signal Leon County's incompetence, our inability to get the job done and give us a black eye, so that new money is coming down, we want for them to believe that we're inept, okay? So, my apologies in misreading, you got it on the sheet of paper, words all over it, but I misread the sheet of paper and perceived that there were 80 outstanding, and so I raised a question to, uh, where she at, raise your hand, there she is, yeah. So, I raised a question, what's so hard about giving away free money, you know? But in fact, we have given away money, 78 folk, Delatory, you know, a lot of folk, and we only have two, so let's expedite it and be done and be ready to re-up for the next cycle. I apologize.
Mr. County Administrator?
I just didn't want to leave anybody with, with the wrong impression, that term is being extended not for the construction, we'll have it, we'll have those done quick, it's more, there's a reporting period that follows that, that's all that is.
Okay, but we'll be done by 2026 in March.
We'll be done, quick.
Good, good, good. All right. Then, Commissioners, I don't know y'all thought about this, but I've been thinking about this for a number of years, and I saw today in the news that Japan, what's a couple of big cities in Japan?
Tokyo.
Tokyo? Okay, I'll take that. I don't know that much about Japan, but that Japan is taking up the four-day work week in Japan, and that was big-time news today. And I really wanted us to contemplate the four-day work week for Leon County. I know we've kicked this can down the road a little bit, but since COVID occurred, it's something that we could really formalize and normalize as a, as a standard mode of operating for Leon County. I'd be interested in that, to talk about it, gnaw on the bone at the Commissioners Retreat in January. I'd make that motion if we could place that on agenda for the pros and cons of, for a four-day work week for Leon County.
I believe the County Administrator would like to comment.
No, and, and of course, we could, it'd be, it'd be a quick item. We, no, we, we, we do the, the four-day work week currently through staffing in just about every department where we have the number of staff to do it, but when it comes to going to a broad policy of, say, four-day work weeks, that would at a certain point require you to close to the public one day of the, you know, one day of the week. So, again, currently where we can, we do it through staffing, we have a very broad use, we have a policy of very broad use of the four-day work week currently, except in those places where we only run two or three people deep and, and can't do it. But if you went to a broad four-day work week, you may be in a position of making the, the policy decision, which of course the board could do, of, of only having county operations open four days a week. So, again, I just throw that out there in case that, again, influences your decision of whether or not you want the policy at all. But again, and just for you to know that we currently have a policy in place that offers four-day work week to most, Public Works, for example, has a four-day work week in place already, but we're able to keep operations going because of the number of people that we have. In some places, we only go, again, two or three people deep, and if those places are open to the public, that would, you know, require your to, sure, please. Yes, 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 yeah, 10-hour four-day.
Or 10-hour days.
Yes, yeah, but, which is not uncommon with a lot of four-day work weeks.
Well, I just didn't want Japan to get ahead of Leon County, you know? That we get ahead of us. When is the public work, you mentioned where Public Works, when is the luncheon?
We've got an email that's gone out, or that, or that's going out, on the, the Public Works Christmas? Anybody?
It's the 19th of December.
19th, as you said, 19th.
At noon.
All right, and then finally, Commissioners, so we're, we're not going to address the four-day work week at our retreat, is that?
I mean, it's up to the board, if you'd like to make a motion, Commissioner Proctor, that some kind of analysis come back.
I'll defer to Commissioner O'Keefe first.
Um, just to be clear, I, I am interested in this. As a whole thing for our workforce, it, it does create, could create issue for our county government, is the only one doing it, but you're talking about lowering the number of work hours, too. You're talking about four eight-hour days instead of five eight-hour days.
No, four 10-hour.
Four 10-hour days.
No, never mind.
Not lowering the work hours. All right, Commissioner Proctor, would you like to make a motion for an analysis?
Um, y'all want to look at this thing or not? Okay, very good. Moving right along. It's called intuition.
Uh huh.
All right, my final comment tonight, friends, is that I'd like a resolution, proclamation, resolution for Karen Woodall and for Barbara Devane. Okay, thank you. I'm not sure which.
We have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I believe that both Mrs. Devane, who now is 82, and Ms. Woodall, I won't give her age, but Ms. Woodall has indicated 46 years of lobbying in this community, and I imagine Ms. Devane has been equally vigilant over that stretch of time, and I feel that their services, seemingly always for, for positive causes, warrant our recognition.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Proctor, second from Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously.
And the last thing, Commissioners, is that Gaston County, I believe Gaston County is going to celebrate their 200th anniversary next year in 2025, and I'd like to request a letter from our board signed by our, our chairman honoring, congratulating Gaston County for their 200th bicentennial anniversary in 2025.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Proctor, second by Commissioner Minor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously.
Chairman, I'm, I'm gonna pull up because Rashonda is looking at me in that tonal voice, that you need to shut up. So, Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
Commissioner Maddox?
Um, Mr. Chair, thank you for coming back to me. I, I, I would like to take this opportunity to ask for a proclamation for someone who has been mentored by some of the best, Anita Davis, Ms. Perkins out there, Altamis Barnes, and has grown to be, as I like to think, think of it, as youngest resident historian, is carrying on the mantle for those folks. Delatory Hollinger, I met him when he was just a kid, he ran up on me at the, the North Florida Democratic Party picnic or something they were having out there, and, how old were you, like nine? 10 or something? And he had, boy, he, he interrogated me, I was running for election, why you want to run? What you want to do is, and I was like, okay, little man, you play football or something? But from then on, I knew he was destined for big things, and we've seen him bring to us some extraordinary things. The park that's renamed out on Tennessee Street, Anita Davis Park, he brought that to us, um, some, some names on Family Way, I mean, he's, he's done some things that I think are honorable, he's also been an NAACP president, and just recently, I believe, he's preached his first sermon, the Reverend Delatory Hollinger, so I would like to honor that young man for what he's done for our community, what he's been able to do as a historian, as a, as a citizen of Leon County.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Maddox, second from Commissioner Cummings, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
And if I might add, I want to tell him, because I know he was real close with Commissioner Davis, Anita Davis, and probably one of his biggest mentors, she'd be very proud of you and what you have done, very, very proud. Like, he was, he would almost say that she, she was like a mother to him. You, you've done her proud, you continue to do so, proud of you, son. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I've got a couple things in closing. I, I received a letter from the Tallahassee Mountain Bike Association asking us to sign a letter of support as they seek a grant from the, I think it's the United States, or where they're working with the United States Forestry Service, they're looking for a grant from the federal government to do some trail improvements on the Munson, the Munson Hills Trail, which is evidently the most popular one. So, before I signed a letter of, a letter of support, it doesn't require anything of us, it's simply a letter of support for them to receive a grant to do some trail maintenance. They would. Second. Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Motion is Commissioner Coman, second is Commissioner Maddox, is that cool? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All, all opposed, passes unanimously, so a letter for Timba. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to ask for a motion from someone to, for a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day in January, next month, next month? All right, motion by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, opposed, passes unanimously. I'd like to also ask someone to make a motion for a proclamation recognizing January's Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Okay, move by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Cummings, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. Lastly, just want to say thank you to our amazing staff for another calendar year of excellence. The, in particular, the parade float the other night was magnificent, we had fake snow, foam snow, it was a vibe, it was awesome. You know, everybody had a great time, our staff does a great job putting that together for, for all of the Commissioners and our families and our friends and all of their friends and families, and it's just a great time, and so wanted to thank them for that. Also wanted to thank the Public Works staff for letting me come out there and have lunch with you for your Thanksgiving lunch. I will regrettably not be able to make the Christmas lunch, but I'm hoping my vice chair maybe be there and, and represent for me, but always a great time hanging out with our Public Works folks, and I appreciate them letting us come and crash their lunch. So, that was exciting. And lastly, Merry, Merry Christmas to everyone. You know, today is two weeks from Christmas Eve, if you can believe that, so we won't see each other again until January 27th. Looking forward to a great 2025, going to kick it off with a great retreat in late January. So, thank you all so much. If there's anything else, if not anything else, we are adjourned.